Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020. My name is Chris Dodson and with us today is Nick Miller, our sign language interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are up for preliminary vote. You can find the link in the business dropdown on the CitiesPittsburghPA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the red launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on Agenda. The meeting agenda should open with all the bills for discussion today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to today's Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020. Our first order is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please begin by stepping forward. Give your name and neighborhood. For the record, the green light indicates you have the beginning of your three minutes. The yellow light comes on. You have one minute to summarize and when the red light comes on, your time is up. First person wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Yesterday, when I watched the meeting and I watched Mr. Burgess sit with his cellphone and scroll, scroll, scroll. How come he isn't letting it? He's supposed to be fine. You're supposed to listen to us. Plus also, Mr. Burgess is not here, but tell him that new bill, I want to see the whole bill because I want to use that bill to file charges against him for his hateful activity. Because when Ms. Gross started talking, when I did, it interrupted me and I said, "Ms. Gross," he told me I can't say anything to her. And then you have the sergeant at arms walking towards me. That means I'm going to be put out because I told her that she's supposed to listen instead of talking. I got three minutes and I, you know what? I'm sick and tired of coming, but I have to because gents don't know what's happening in the city. You make up your own laws and we die. I'm coming down to try to stop us from being attacked and die. Mr. Burgess, he needs to know, he has to stop this same race discrimination. That's what it is because I'm black, I'm dark and he's yellow. You know, the yellow ones in here get to speak longer. Now, people don't want me to say yellow, but you must, you must because when, when the guard said, "Hey, no, no black people." And I said, "There's two yellow ones on here, two yellow men." And I'm saying color because when it comes to this dark ones, we don't get to speak. We will be stopped. Now, as far as hateful, I think it's hateful that you got a law that say we can speak three minutes, but then you make the decision that I can't say something to a councilwoman that don't come like she should, always late, making $68,000 a year and she can speak when I speak. I got three minutes. You won't even give us, I tried to get five when Ms. Harris was here. It's, I got a couple of seconds. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm sick and I'm depressed because of the racism that I have to endure. Even when I tell the receptionist that I leave a mayor, a message for the mayor, she's going to say, "No, 311, 311." It wouldn't let me even leave a message. She's yellow too. That same race discrimination, that's what I'm suffering from. I don't, hey, I don't care about you being yellow. You just lack pigmentation, that's all. My husband's like complexing my children, so it, it ain't because I'm dark. I don't care about it. It's gents that make it the difference and I'm sick and tired of it. I'm tired of gents and you can look all you want. Like that man, there was a white man here told gents about gents rolling your eyes. He said, "Gents, you sit and roll your eyes. You need to listen instead of rolling your eyes. Keep your mouth shut."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Oakland and Squirrel Hill. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Gao Jing, Xin Yan, 25. Xin Wa, 2020, the year of the rat. Chinese. Crazy Rich Asians, 2018 release, earned $200 million. This is not your regular Kung Fu movie at all. This is by John Chu and I recommend it. It's a version though, a social version of Jeet Kune Do, in my view. Does Jiang Rong use Tom Thaats Clearview AI facial recognition technology? Does Pittsburgh? I think you should ask. After I founded the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary in 1998, incorporated in Pennsylvania and New York, and after securing memberships in the associations of the 21 primary disciplines and drawing on the info intel expertise of my disciplinary colleagues, I created a library at the Center for Global Studies Module on 40 Beltsilver Avenue. The Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, the CLP, is a concern, a major concern of this council. It's very clear. CLP interrogative, Tunumi, that's Nigerian Hauza. Does any CLP branch have the journal Genetics of the Genetic Society of America? None, no branch, zero value. Does the CGSII library at 40 Beltsilver Avenue have the paper version of genetics? Yes, we do, 10 out of 10. The CLP, another way to look at this is it's an imperative. There can be an imperative. Every CLP branch should have the print Journal of the American Chemical Society. I'm a member of the American Chemical Society. It's one of the, the best, most, has most expertise of people in chemistry in the United States and across the world. But the CLP branches don't have it. The library at the CGSII and the 40 Beltsilver, the primary module, we do have it. And, and indicative, CLP indicative. No CLP branch has the offline digital issue of Physics of Plasmas, which is a really important journal. So that's a zero. The CGSII library does have this. Now, I think that this means that the CGSII library, which I have created, is better than on this axis in the sciences than the CLP branches. Now, we have people on, on the Board of Trustees who are CLP trustees, who are counselors. So all of you who are, should understand that the expertise that you are manifesting and for which you are chosen is inferior to what I have to offer and thousands of other people in our city have to offer.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? Are there any additional speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committees Agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Cockhill. Mrs. Gross. Mr. Kraus is absent. Mr. O'Connor. President Kale Smith. Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle. Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the morning is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Would a clerk please read the first bill?
Bill number six, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement or Existing Agreement for Consulting Services But Not Limited to Auditing, Accounting, and Technical Services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000.
Please have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion rules. Carries. Would a clerk please call, read the next for 21, 22, 23, and 24 together?
Bill number 21, Ordinance Amended and Supplemented in the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration by Adding Chapter 212 Administrative Matters for Taxes and Fees. Bill number 22, Ordinance Amended to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Amusement Tax. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill number 23, Ordinance Amended to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 253 Parking Tax. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill number 24, Ordinance Amended to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 258 Payroll Tax. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code.
Please have a motion on all four bills.
To approve. Second.
These are, just so councils aware, we are updating our code to be consistent with the definitions in our tax regulations, which is what these bills are actually doing. So it's matching, it's matching the code to the tax regulations. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Out of an abundance of caution, due to, or to, to avoid perceived or real conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain today.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Will we, can we please read Bill 25?
Bill 25, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to Purchase a Regenerative Street Sweeper to Assist in Ongoing Removal of Debris from the New Bike Trail at Hazelwood Green and Other Premature Surfaces and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $187,000.
Please have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman O'Connor? Just real quick, this is, this is great, not just for Hazelwood Green, but all around the city. I've been asking for this for four or five years now in the budget, that we need to start purchasing equipment like this to take care of green infrastructure all across the city, being on the Alka-Sand Board. I know Councilwoman Gross also being on the PWSA Board. We ourselves need to start purchasing this, especially when we're doing large green infrastructure projects or else the maintenance of them is going to be far worse for our system. So purchasing one of these, thanks to the Richard King Mellon Foundation, but in the future, we ourselves need to start purchasing these. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to elaborate a little bit. This has been a long time coming. It's something that other cities do that we are lagging behind on, is to have pavement that is pervious, not impervious, so that rainwater can actually saturate through sidewalks or through roads. Fortunately, it takes a different kind of maintenance because if the kind of cells or spacers in the pavement get clogged up, then they're no longer pervious and the rainwater isn't saturating. So it's, again, it's something that other cities are way ahead of us and so it's glad to see that we're, we're starting to catch up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Please read Bill 34.
Bill 34, Ordinance Amended and Supplemented in the City Code at Title I, Administrative Article 11 Human Resources Code of Conduct by Adding a New Section Entitled 197.21 Hateful Activities.
Please have a motion?
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second?
Second.
Defer, Councilman Burgess?
Thank you very much. I have a handout which I'll give to the clerk. When Councilwoman Lavelle and I started, started this work, I am pleased to say that it is now capturing national attention. We've gotten emails from City Council in Cleveland and City Council for Columbus that are trying to model our legislation and to replicate it and we believe this is catching fire. When I, the second thing is, I do understand that having conversations about race sometimes makes us uncomfortable. The literature says that that uncomfortableness is because of the structure of our city and the structure of our system, that, that makes us uncomfortable and that we have to continue to have these very public conversations until we all get comfortable talking about issues of race in our city. It is the only way things will, will get better. And so I want to begin, continue that conversation with this piece of legislation. The last thing I will say is this, when we passed laws on stolen handguns, we knew that it was probably unconstitutional, but we passed it because we wanted to make a moral stand. Recently, we passed three pieces of legislation in terms of handgun legislation and we did that because we wanted to make a moral stand. And so, again, I am standing to make a moral stand. And in this case, the legislation calls for banning hateful activities. And let's talk about that. First of all, we have to talk about it in terms of race. Racism is structural institutional. And so I remind us of what we already learned before. Racism, in other words, isn't just someone using a racial slur, it's also the poor schooling in predominantly black and brown neighborhoods, the racial wealth gap, housing discrimination, mass incarceration, police killings of unarmed black and brown people, higher infant mortality rate, higher infant mortality rates for people of color, and unequal access to healthcare. That's Janine Dustman-Harris. I have found, well, we'll say, systematic racism is embedded in society and has a detrimental effect on the lives of health outcomes of people of color. Those who experience racial discrimination are more likely to suffer from chronic diseases and premature death. Racism is a public health crisis because it risks the health and well-being of all citizens and causes destruction at a social and economic level. I tend not to talk about individual or personal racism because I don't think it's helpful. I'd rather talk about actions. Donald Trump, only the lawyer can judge whether Donald Trump is a racist. I don't, I can't judge that. I can say that some of his actions and statements seem racist. Racism is killing African Americans in Pittsburgh and is an immediate public health crisis. Pittsburgh's Gender and Equity Commission issued a report titled Pittsburgh's Inequality Across Gender and Race. Black women in Pittsburgh face higher rates of maternal mortality and poverty, along with lower rates of employment and college readiness. Black men in Pittsburgh face higher rates of occupational segregation, homicides, cancer, and cardiovascular disease. Black children have higher infant mortality rates and lower educational achievement outcomes. According to its findings, Pittsburgh's block residents could move to almost any other city in the United States and have a better quality of life. In subsequent interviews, thank you, Winita Howell, University of Pittsburgh sociologist who worked on the report, said, "Our report empirically validated that Pittsburgh's racism is not only alive and well, but more extreme than other cities." That's worth repeating. "Our report empirically validated that Pittsburgh racism is not only alive and well, but more extreme than most cities." And of course, we passed legislation affirming the fact that racism is a public health crisis in our city. And now, the next step, one of the ways to reduce racism in Pittsburgh is by banning, banning hateful activities. One of the ways to reduce racism in Pittsburgh is by banning hateful activities. So let's talk about, the legislation defines hateful activities as activities that incite or engage in violence, intimidation, harassment, threats, or defamation targeting an individual or group based on their actual or perceived race, color, religion, national origin, ethnicity, immigration status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or disability. The legislation bans hateful activities by, in three ways. One, no city employee shall engage in hateful activities toward another city employee. No city employee will encourage nor organize others to engage in hateful activities toward another city employee. The prohibition of hateful activities includes acts that occur in person, in writing, and across various media platforms, included but not limited to email, Facebook, and Twitter. Violations of hateful, of hateful activities, violations are referred to the city's Ethic Hearing Board, who has the power to find or recommend disciplining actions. This hateful activity on its face has no place in the city of Pittsburgh, absolutely has no place in city government. However, second of all, let's go to the definition. There are three components of this hateful activity. One, does the employee incite or engage in a defined activity? Two, does the defined activity constitute violence, intimidation, harassment, threats, or defamation? Three, has the employee targeted an individual or group based on a limited set of personal characteristics? Only if all three occur is there a violation of the ordinance. Finally, the Center for American Progress, the Southern Poverty Law Center, Free Press, the National Hispanic Media Coalition, Colors of Change, and the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under the Law, along with a coalition of other 40 groups across the nation, announced the release of Change the Terms, a set of recommended policies for corporations to adopt and to implement to reduce hateful activities on their platforms. This city of Pittsburgh hateful activity prohibition ethics policy is consistent with the Change the Term policies recommendations. Now, all hateful activity is not racist. However, most of it is. Number one, what are the characteristics of hateful activity? First of all, our research shows that hateful activities or hateful acts are disproportionately race-centered. African Americans, and this is something that we don't chat about, African Americans are the most frequent victims of hate crimes. African Americans are the most frequent victims of hate crimes. Hate crimes are specifically fundamentally an African-American problem. Number two, hateful activities often employ the use of racial language and/or racial stereotypes. Let's talk about what those stereotypes look like. I teach class in mass media and we teach this in the class. First of all, and, and what I have found, this hateful stuff, it almost always goes to these stereotypes. They, they get, they get frustrated and they can't help themselves. So what's the black male stereotypes? Well, Sambo is the happy slave, the slave that just, you know, grateful to serve. Jim Crow is the shuffling, grinning, incompetent African American. But the one that's the most prominent, that has played its part on the national stage probably with the most effect is the savage. The same qualities that we exemplify in non-African Americans, assertiveness, aggressiveness, intelligence, power. But when it becomes an African-American male, that's a problem. He, he's a savage. He, he, and normally, they will take this savage thing and they will do the subcategory of it, which is the Mandingo thing. And they will say somehow that this African-American male is a threat to white women or to women. They'll say, "Oh, he charged a white woman," or "White women feel uncomfortable around him." That's, that's the normal sort of racist slander about black men, or "He's a homophobe." It's always sexual with black men because that is the tradition of our country. Between 19, between 1886 and 1968, in this country, there were 4,500 lynchings. That's almost a lynching every week in this country. Of those lynchings, almost the vast majority of them were lynching black men because of some white woman accusation. It was the most consistent reason to lynch black men. And so now, they don't necessarily do this publicly, but they do it privately, right? They, they go on the internet, they do a whisper campaign. Now, if it's a black female, they also have stereotypes. Mammy is the one from Gone with the Wind and that's the black woman, and probably my voice today. I'm having the black woman who takes care of the child, who is the mother figure. Aunt Jemima is similar to Mammy, only that she is usually the cook. She's not necessarily the child giver. Safira is the aggressive black woman. She's the bossy black woman. You know, that's the one that if you're too, too smart, too intelligent, you need to stay in your place. And then the one that, that also is also portrayed in, even now, in television, motion pictures, is the Jezebel. That's the overly sexually seductive, no man can resist her, a black female. Now, how do these work in real life? First of all, we have to understand that the relationship between African-Americans and their experience in Pittsburgh and its white counterparts in Pittsburgh are not the same. Let's look at a few characteristics, just to make the point. First of all, in terms of population. Pittsburgh is 65% white, it's only 23% black. Geography, Pittsburgh is extremely segregated. 70% of African-Americans live in concentrated communities, right? So most of our neighborhoods are mostly segregated. In terms of income, whites make household average, they make $56,000 a year on average in Pittsburgh. Blacks, for the most part, are much poorer. They make about a third of that, $22,000 a year. In homeownership, which has to do with wealth, 60% of whites own their own homes. Only 30%, 36% of blacks own their own homes. And then the social networks, and in the, in the Hines Report, barriers to bridge, bridges, they make this point better than I can. Pittsburgh's social networks are extremely segregated, right? So let's take, let me just give you an example of that. I, I live in North Point Breeze. North Point Breeze is probably somewhere between 30 to 40% African-American. Right across the street, three blocks from me, is North Point Breeze, which is probably closer to 90% white, about 10% African-American. And right, right up the street from that is Squirrel Hill. And even though those neighborhoods are 10, 12 blocks apart, they are miles apart socially. For instance, I, I don't have access to, I don't have a relationship with the people who go, although I, I know the priests, but I don't have a relationship with those who go to St. Bees. I don't have a relationship with those who go to Tree of Life. If the, if the store owners and business owners in Squirrel Hill decide to get together for whatever reason and make a decision about me or about black people, there would be no black people to have that conversation because they are, because Pittsburgh's segregated. And so what happens in Pittsburgh is you have these white organizations and these white people that make these decisions about African-Americans. First of all, they make them without African-Americans being in the room. That alone is a problem. Just us not being in a room and you make decisions about us with us not being in a room is a problem. However, when you bring in hateful activity, then it becomes blatantly racist. White privilege means there's a fundamental power differential in terms of population, geography, income, homeownership, and social networks between whites and blacks in Pittsburgh. So in Pittsburgh, when white individuals or white groups engage in hateful activities against black individuals or groups, it is almost always a racist act, by definition. Even when you don't mean it to be, when you do it, it's racist. Yeah. So, I want to make sure that I'm clear about what I'm saying. I am not judging or calling anybody a name. I'm simply saying, when people engage in hateful activities against African-Americans and they're white, they may not be racist. The individual who uses racist activities may not be a racist, but that's what racists do. Going on the blogs, going in a smear campaign secretly, a whisper campaign, not talking directly to the people who are accused, but creating a lynch mentality, that may not be, the person who does it may not be a coward, but that's what cowards do. When you organize into groups to slander, to lynch, to defame African-American person or group, that does not make you a hate group, but that's what hate groups do. That is what Pittsburgh does. It's interesting, since I've introduced this legislation, I've had lots of employees of the city come to me privately telling me that this is their experience. It is the experience and normally, we don't have this conversation, but it happens in our city. And this has no place. There is no place for this. This should never happen to an African-American. It should never happen to an African-American group. Yeah. And so, in order for Pittsburgh to be a livable city for everyone, it's interesting that we call Pittsburgh the most livable city, yet it is the worst city in the country for African-Americans. We must come together and prioritize racial justice and reconciliation. We use these other words, you know, equity and diversity, yeah, but really, we ought to add the word- to add the word race because that's really the problem. The problem in Pittsburgh is not inclusion, it's black inclusion. It's not equity, it's black equity. We need to understand that in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh has a race problem. And as a city, we must, and one of the ways that we start is making a moral stand to eliminate racist and hateful activities. I believe, and I believe this, we're just celebrating Martin Luther King's birthday. And King, there's two Kings, right? There's the nineteen sixty-three King, which is the "I Have a Dream" King, where, you know, I want people to be judged by the content of the character and not the color of their skin. But there's also the nineteen sixty-eight King, which is the "I Have a Mount", I've been to the mountaintop speech where he talks about economic justice and the distribution of wealth. They're both true in our city. But I believe, and I want to have this conversation because I love this city, but there's parts of this city that's sick. And King said this in nineteen sixty-eight, that this sickness will kill our country. And I'm going to suggest to you that if we don't do something, this sickness will kill our city. And we need to prove we are stronger than racism and that hate and racism has no place in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Discussion by other members? Councilwoman Gross?
Councilwoman Burgess, as always, these materials are incredibly helpful in giving both ourselves and the public background framing, a shared vocabulary, in order to move forward our collective actions around our shared values. And it's wonderful to have a kind of consolidated presentation here. I hope again that these will be included in the legislative record so that members of the public can go to this session and click on the link so that they can see the exact same materials that we're looking at here. Especially, again, I want to thank you for acknowledging the work of the Gender Equity Commission and drawing attention of Pittsburgh to the disparities in wealth and even health between especially black women and black men to other demographic categories of the city. And I share your concern, and I think it's right to talk about black equity when we're talking about equity. This presentation jumps from the kind of structural and institutionalized racism to individual actions of hate. And so, in that part, I'm wondering how the legislation, you know, juggles the two things. So when we're talking about wealth creation, reducing disparities and increasing black equity, we're talking about changing systems, changing, as you've emphasized many times, our budgeting priorities, our legislative priorities. But that's a big jump to individual actions. In sociology, you call it reductive reasoning, right? To jump from what is systemic to individual. And so, then I get confused because when I, in my district, when we've had hate incidents, like in Lawrenceville late last year, there was a rise in hate crimes, sponsored, we think, by organized hate groups like the Patriot Front. And there was a series of taggings. I was struggling to find on my phone some of the references that I could share with you all to summarize those activities, especially on the heels of the Tree of Life incident, massacre. There was a series of spray paints on properties owned specifically by Jewish people in Lawrenceville. And so Lawrenceville United, the community group, brought in the FBI. And we did a session, and again, I don't have the dates specifically in front of me. I'm struggling to find those. I asked my staff to help me find those. It was late in twenty nineteen. Hate crimes, here's one, hate crimes on rise and Lawrenceville prompt FBI response. So hate speech and hate crimes have very specific federal definitions, and because I don't know them offhand, can you speak to that in the legislation? Are they consistent with the federal definitions? And are they inconsistent with the federal definitions? Are we going above and beyond? If you could just help me out with that, because the FBI, we brought, the FBI came in and did a training, I think on January twenty-eighth, sorry, so it was beginning of last year. I got my years mixed up, sorry. We're in twenty twenty now, so this would have been January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And specifically talked about that line between a kind of criminal or non-criminal action. So that's my line of inquiry. So Councilwoman Burgess, I don't know if you want to respond, or if this is, you know, or if we're going to have like a much longer discussion with post-agendas and things like that.
So I will follow counsel's lead on how they want to handle this. I'm not in a hurry. We can, I'm going to have the conversation all year, of course, but let's talk about this. This is narrowly tailored on purpose, right? There's a difference between a hate crime, which this is not, and hateful activities of which this is. Those are two different things. One says that you have committed a crime, a federal crime, a crime that can be prosecuted. This is not a crime, this is a morally reprehensible act, and that it is tightly narrowed to city employees, because I believe the city oftentimes must show the way and point the way. I can't stop private individuals from doing things. I can tell them they shouldn't, but I can't stop them. I can tell corporations, and that the principles come from this power, these groups have tried to pressure to corporate America to change their practices. And so I thought that it would be good for city government to show the way, because, see, let's be honest, we're politicians at this table. And in my experience, political campaigns are ugly. In my own campaigns, I had lots of ugliness, lots of lies and innuendos and smears. And I never said a word because in a political campaign, that's what's expected. Bob's here, he knows I'm telling the truth, right? That happens. That's politics. Bob Bowder from the Tribune Review. "I've been the subject of multiple smear campaigns because of my effectiveness of putting resources in African-American communities. Oftentimes, I've been the subject of vicious hate campaigns. I understand why." And I never say anything about it. That's part of the game. But after the election is over, after the votes have been counted, to have a campaign waged against a city employee or even a public official after the votes were over, and for that campaign to be fueled by people who work in the same government, people who may even work in the same floor, for that kind of ugly, nasty, racist activity to occur, to me is distasteful, to me is immoral, and to me is blatantly racist. And so, I think that should never occur. I think, I think a couple of things. First of all, since we're having this conversation, I think the people who do such things should publicly apologize. Second of all, I think that people who do such things, and this is the point of the legislation, have no place in this government. They have no place. And I mean, if you want me to get on my soapbox, I can. I was not gonna, but we can, can talk about leadership and what leadership really means. But I'll start with that. So this is tailored on purpose to just city employees. And so I'm willing to do whatever the body wants to do. If you want to send it down to the law department, the ACLU have not weighed in directly. They've said, I guess, on WESA because of its narrowly tailored nature, it's probably constitutional. But I have no problem having the law department, we can have post-agendas and public hearings. To me, it's up to you. I want to make this statement publicly, because, see, cowards hide. They won't show up in the conversation. They won't show up today when we're having the conversation, they will hide. And so I want to have the conversation in public, with the lights on, with the cameras on, with the world to see, to say, this is what happens in Pittsburgh and this is not right. Because, see, I don't have to take it. I'm blessed in that God has blessed me at a place in my life where I don't have to take it. But there are employees, because my livelihood doesn't depend on me speaking out, I can speak out, but there are people in public works who can't speak out. There are people in human relations, in personnel, who can't speak out. There are people throughout our government, there are police officers and fire people who can't speak out. And so I speak for them to say that this activity occurs, and everyone on this table, if they were to be honest, know it occurs. And I'm saying, let's make a moral statement saying this has no place in this city.
Councilwoman Gross actually still has the floor.
I'd forgotten, actually. Thank you for reminding me. I'll just leave it here. I've got, I've found some of the materials, my staff helped me find them. I want to say thank you to them. And so there was this training, and we've continued to log throughout twenty nineteen. They reminded me in some of these materials that there was continued activity in the respect that there wasn't just slander, but actual threats and harm threatened against people in Lawrenceville based on race, religion. And so, I'm happy to continue the conversation, and I think I understand the gist of what Councilwoman Burgess was just saying and how it's, he intends it differently than the federal definitions, but what the FBI takes action on is the difference between free speech or advocating violence or threatening someone's well-being. So that's their action difference, right? So saying things is different than threatening someone, even with, again, posts online or stickers or graffiti. It's, that's their, the way I understand the federal definitions. I do think this is a fruitful conversation, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I want to thank you, Reverend. You always put on a great presentation when you put things together. And I just want to talk a little bit about, I think a lot of this, we all know here at the table, that a lot of this occurred during the council presidency vote, which is why now I'm where I am. But I think that it was such a hurtful thing to go through for all of us, and I want to be honest about this. I think it was really hurtful to watch things being said about our colleagues and reading things and hearing the things about, on all sides, it was just, it got so nasty. And yet, we know one another's families, we know each other's personal pains, we've grown with one another, and to see what happened during that time was just, it was painful. It was painful to watch. But I think that, I know you think that legislation is, and that's what we're here for, is the way to do things, but I don't think you can legislate morality. I think you have to have a conversation, not talking to a camera, not talking through a mic, not talking through the media, but actually sitting down and talking to one another. And that is the only way we're going to start making changes, I think, in the city. We talk at each other, we don't hear one another, we don't sit down and try to figure out why anybody came to some of the conclusions they've come to, or why they've taken some of the actions they've taken. But I know some of the people involved, and, I mean, we all know all the people involved, frankly, and I'd love to see everyone getting along. I mean, I know, you know, people say I have this Pollyanna thinking where everyone can just all get along, but I truly believe that we can all get along if we actually start having conversations. We don't have to love one another, we don't have to support one another, but we have to work and respect one another. But I think it's the whole discourse with the politics in this country right now. I think that you see, I have seen some of the nastiest campaigns I've ever seen, heard some of the horrible, most blatant lies I've ever seen, and yet it's acceptable and people get elected based on those things. And so our public, our voters, have to do a better job at discerning those kinds of things and also determine that they're not going to tolerate it either by not voting for people who participate in those kinds of things. So I think that there's a lot to be said, but I think we first have to have the conversation with one another. So I'm going to say that. But I think there's a lot of good people involved and a lot of hurtful feelings involved in all this right now. I don't think that, I definitely, I hurt, I want to be honest, I hurt for you and your family during that time because I know your sons, your son helped my son, and so it makes me sad to think that, what they went through. But it also makes me sad to think what we all went through during that time, because I think we really, we didn't do, it's not who we are, and we really didn't do ourselves, we did ourselves a disservice, actually, the way we handled ourselves during that entire time, for something that's a part-time position, more work, no extra pay, and never going to be any more than that. And I think, you know, for what we sacrificed for that, it, you know, it really, we really have to reevaluate, you know, who we are as people and is, are we willing to put everything on the line, including our friendships for years, for something that's so temporary? I just want to say that. But having said that, I have not voted for anything that was unconstitutional since I've been here. So I would like an opinion from the law department, but I'd like an opinion from the law department. I also like to know how this would affect the unions, because union employees would also have some support and some help from their unions, but what about other employees, non-union employees, if they were to be fired or take some kind of action? Honestly, I think some of this is, you mentioned it's already in the federal government, federal law. So I think that, and I saw the ACLU's comments, it should be okay. I'd just like to make sure that we are okay before I vote. But regardless of how we vote on this, I think this should just be the beginning of the conversations, but not at the table. I mean, what you can do at the table, but I think more importantly, we have to respect one another to sit down and try to mend fences and talk through the hurt and pain that was caused during this time, and how do we heal from those things? And maybe educate the people on racism and some other things that I think, you know, people are not aware of. And also, people felt harassed during that time. So we can't negate the other people's, you know, feelings as well. I think we'd have to sit down, because that's how we got to where we are, because both sides had feelings, very strong feelings, right or wrong. To me, it was hurtful for you. And I felt bad because you were on a trip, I want to just say, with your wife and family, or your wife, in dealing with all this at the time. And so that, I hurt for you, I hurt for your family, but I want to make sure that this doesn't happen to other people, but I think we really have to have a conversation. And so I would love to work with you on that as well. And I know you and I and a couple other people are going to sit down today and talk, but I think mediation is one thing, but I think it's an ongoing lesson that needs to, you know, be shared throughout the building. And there are people, other employees, I can say that I've received phone calls from other employees that are going through this, and other departments, and they don't have a voice, and we try to be that voice, unless you put their name out there publicly, then you risk them even further. So there's a lot that has to be discussed. And as we all know, there's a lot of women here, African-American women here that have come to us, at least they've come to me, and I've advocated for them many times, but it's, you do so at the risk of them and their jobs or their future. And so you want to be so careful how you handle it. So I think it's a conversation we have to have, you know, so.
So it seems that we want to hold for a legal opinion. Before I make that motion, I'll wait, I'll do second round.
Okay. Any other members on first round? If not, I want to just add two quick comments, and I actually have a question specific to the legislation. One is, while I understand the sentiment around getting in a room and having a conversation, that may apply to us as a body, it does not apply to us as a city, because merely having a warm conversation is not going to solve the ills that plague this city, nor the ills that plague the African-American community.
Can I respond to that?
Because it's very specific policies that have gotten, gotten the African-American community to this place, whether it's redlining, whether it's lack of being able to go to higher education institutions. There are specific policies that have, over hundreds of years, ended up in this place that we are. So I do believe we have to legislate ourselves out of here. Also want to be clear, and I think it was King's speech to other America, I think it was, when you were talking about if we don't address these ills, then our country will die. This city, despite all the accolades, is dying. We are, we have lost population every year for more than thirty years now. There was a statistic where three African-Americans were leaving the city a day. We are now, and for the very first time in history, the Allegheny Conference is having to deal with this, they are now unable to bring major corporations- to deal with this, they are now unable to bring major corporations to this city because of lack of diversity. And lack of diversity is literally a business killer in corporate America now. And because our workforce does not reflect our population, businesses like Google, like others, literally do not want to be in our city. So we do have a problem. Because of this state of our African-American community, we literally have thousands of jobs that are going unfulfilled every single day in this city because we're simply not training the population that we have. So the structural racism that has led to that is indeed killing our city, and that there's no way around that. So we do have to change that. Also want to be clear, I do think it's right for government to lead the way, but government and of ourselves cannot get us out of this problem. We need the Allegheny Conference to realize they play a significant role in this. We need our philanthropic community, our foundations, to understand that they have actually contributed to this problem as well.
Absolutely.
And they have to be at the tables, as well as our higher education institutions and many others. With all that being said, I have a specific question to the legislation. In the legislation, you state that all three hateful, all three components of hateful activities must occur in order to, for there to be a violation of the ordinance. Why all three?
It's because...
In my mind, if one of these should occur, I should be able to then go to the ethics board. I shouldn't have to wait for all three things to occur to me when one, over a period of time, is simply enough.
It really comes from the authors of the information. And so I did it to be consistent with the source of that, the changing term source. And so they were very specific about it. But I, in terms of moving the legislation through as we have this conversation, I'm willing to make changes. I just wanted to forward it. I knew there'd be some discussion. Before I make the, before I make, before I make the motion to hold is my terms. I'll say this, and I, Teresa said, Teresa and I are, Teresa is my closest friend on council. Everybody knows that. Teresa and I, her brother taught me in high school, right? We, we are connected, her and I, right? And so I appreciate her concern about me and my family, but it's interesting that people, not her, but other people who talk about me don't talk to me. So I'll tell you my thoughts on a personal note. I am not angry at anybody. I forgive everybody, even those who do not deserve to be forgiven. I don't forgive them for them, I forgive them for me because my faith forces me to forgive other folk. It's what I believe. I think a lot about leadership. I have a son doing a PhD, and his work is in leadership. And I'm sure all of you know about, you know, different types of leadership, the trait leadership, that leaders are, are born, not made, and behavioral style, that there's either, you know, task versus people, situational theories that leaders can change their behaviors depending on the task, functional theories where the leader is trained, and once the leader is trained, he or she can switch their style depending on it, leadership presence that the leader has some inherent innate ability that separates him from other people. What I believe is servant leadership, that leadership is a philosophy where the main goal of leaders is to serve. So I never, I don't approach leadership as a right. I preach, I approach leadership, even being a member of council. I don't deserve to be a member of council. I'm a servant. The people have chosen me, and I'm honored to serve. But I will tell you personal, I've been, I'm an old man now, and I'm, I am tied to be the longest-serving person on council, but Cory is a young man, and he has his future ahead of him, and Erica's a young woman, right? And so, and, I'm sorry.
And I'm young too.
Bobby's young. And so I'm going to, on a personal note, since, I'm going to tell you what I've learned. And I've been preaching all of my life. My first job was as a pastor. I am fundamentally a preacher. So I will tell you what's not written down anywhere, what I have learned in my life, and then I won't talk about this again. There's something called three levels of leadership that I believe in. It comes from the servant leadership model. It says the leader is really a leader in three ways. A leader is a leader in public, and that refers to the actions that the leader takes with two or more people, and that that leader has to learn to lead in public. It also says a leader is a leader in private. That's one-on-one conversations, and also a leader to your family, right, to your husband and to your wife and to your children. But then the author talks about something called personal leadership. Personal leadership is when the leader gets the technical, psychological, but most importantly, the moral development. If you want to be a leader, you can have all, you can have every position that you want. It really won't matter. If you want to be a leader, you can have all the kind of relationships in the world, and it really won't matter. If you really want to be a leader, you got to be a leader from the heart. You got to get your heart right. Because if your heart's not right, God won't bless you in the public, God won't bless you in your private life, and God won't bless you in your, in your personal life. Your heart got to rewrite. Leadership and service is a matter of the heart. You get your heart right, and it won't matter what they call you. Get your heart right. Won't matter where you serve, get your heart right, and you will be able to lift up people in service wherever you go. That's what I've learned, that's what I live, that's what I believe.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Cockhill.
Yes. I just want to say, you know, I know emotions are raw still from the presidency, like you said, Teresa, you know. I also want to say to that, there's not a political campaign, whether it be a Democratic Committee seat, that I ever ran for, there were, I was not defamed, and I was not persecuted for something that really wasn't true. I agree with most of what's in this packet, but this, this page right here about the city employees and return them to the ethics board, to me, it seems like an infringement on free speech. I don't know where the Law Department comes down on that, but this seems like it's a direct result from the presidency, and this particular page I cannot support.
So I will motion to hold for a law, a legal opinion from the Law Department?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That moves us on to invoices. May I please have a motion for the approval of the invoices?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices pass. We do not have any interdepartmental transfers. We have no P cards. That moves us on to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Cockhill. Will the clerk please read the first bill?
Bill number 44, resolution granting unto Gartley Group LLC, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense, and entrance ramp at 4736 Liberty Avenue, 8th Ward, 7th Council District.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Next bill?
Bill number eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Recycling Partnership, Inc., to conduct public outreach surrounding the city's recycling program, and to purchase containers for curbside residential recycling collection, and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I didn't have a chance to talk with Councilman Cockhill about this ahead of time, so I apologize, but I, I just want to acknowledge for our discussion that curbside recycling in blue bins is something that I, when I was in graduate school in North Carolina in the 1990s, that we did. During North Carolina, we had blue bins on sidewalks, and we put all of our combined recycling into them, although I think we might have actually had to separate them as well. And I just want to acknowledge that as I'm talking to people who are concerned about recycling and reducing plastic consumption, and there are multiple different coalitions in the city, that part of the problem is the combine, combining of all of your household recyclables into one container. It makes it more costly for us as the city to then try to find someone to buy any single one of those things, whether it's the glass or the paper or the plastic. And then we want to generally acknowledge that, you know, 25 years ago, when I was in graduate school in North Carolina, there was a market for multiple kinds of plastic with those little numbers on the bottom. And I think in the city now, we're down to just number two. I don't want to state that incorrectly. And so basically, the only thing that we're supposed to be putting out are plastic bottles, things with a neck, right? And that we're, there's no, we can't sell the yogurt containers, we can't sell the clamshell containers, and that on top of, even the things that there is a market for that we could be selling to take these plastics off our hands so that we're not trucking them in our diesel trucks all the way to the landfill and dumping them, that often, they're too dirty, and we can't get them clean enough that the marketplace will buy them. So we have a really broken system. I think it's odd that it's always called single stream because it just doesn't make sense to me. That's where you dump all your stuff together in the blue bin, right? And then, you know, our recycling truck comes and picks it up and takes it off someplace, and then it's someone else's problem to try to separate it and then to find someplace that, to send it in the world that it gets recycled. So this is completely broken system. So it's just so unfortunate that we're 20, 25 years late on the blue bins. Because I, while it seemed like a great idea even five, six years ago when I first came on council, the, the market, the industry for how the thing from your household gets to be recycled into something new is completely different and is broken for most cities. So I just want to acknowledge that and pause. Like, is this actually what we should be doing now? I'm not an expert. Like, this is what I gleaned in the last couple of weeks of meetings with people who really study and are concerned about these issues. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I said as much as I knew.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yeah, I'm with you, Councilwoman. I, you know, we, if you read the roadmap to zero waste, we clearly need to create a circular economy here so that we're actually recycling our recyclables in the region. And unfortunately, one of the best ways that we could do that is pass a bottle bill at the state level so that there's a cash incentive to actually turn in your glass and actually turn in your plastics and actually turn, you know, there are states like Oregon that do an impressive job at that and are, there's actually an incentive to not just leave it at your curbside, but go to a facility, drop off the bottle, and get, you know, a few cents back for the bottle. And they're actually able in Oregon and the Pacific Northwest to recycle all sorts of plastics, and it's done locally, and it goes back into creating jobs in the local economy. So, you know, in addition to doing what we can here, we should probably be lobbying for the state bill and legislation to pass at the state level to pass a bottle bill. But that said, you know, the roadmap to zero waste does call for using our brain power that we have here in Pittsburgh to developing what we could do here. And that includes Northeast Ohio, and then includes West Virginia, that includes the region, and I'm really, really interested in that. The benefit I see to having the blue bins, even now, recognizing that single stream isn't the best way and that we don't necessarily want to be mixing our glass with everything else, is that it, one, encourages the behavior that we want to encourage, and two, it allows us to get away from allowing plastic bags, so that if we can ever get to the point where we are banning or putting a fee on plastic bags, then there is an option to point people to, and we can say, here are the bins, no need for plastic bags anymore. So that's, I mean, I realize it's a lot of money for that, but if we're ever going to get to the point where we're looking at plastics, I see that as a worthwhile endeavor for the time being until we can get to the roadmap to zero waste.
Councilwoman Smith, then, Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, just to be real brief, I think it's funny to hear some of these conversations about recycling glass and getting money for refunds. Some of us old people on council remember the days...
I was just going to say that.
When our generation actually did those things naturally, and we had milk delivered and didn't have, you know, we had gallons of milk delivered and not little containers of milk all over the place. We had paper bags, not plastic bags, and then we reused the plastic, the paper bags. But I want to say, even now, that, I think we always swing the pendulum too far. You know, we go from one extreme to the other. We don't really use common sense a lot of times. And one of the things I see is, you know, we're doing all this stuff now with plastic bags, but we're not sure the effects of the paper bags because now they're treated in ways they weren't treated in years ago with chemicals and with, I think it's some kind of plastic treatment, yeah, inside. So I think that, you know, I hope that we don't swing it so far that in a couple of years, we're going down the road and saying, oh, we shouldn't have used paper bags. So I really, or we should have used paper bags without, you know, chemicals or some other things. I think that we need to really evaluate everything and think, and use a little bit of common sense while we're doing this so that we're not regretting it 10 years or 20 years or 30 years down the road. And your, our younger generations are saying, I remember when we used to do plastic bags, and that now they're going back to plastic bags. So I want to make sure that we're using some thought when we, we do all this stuff. And, I mean, it's been an issue that since I've been here, I think, you know, we've started a lot of the stuff, the recycling program, we started the anti-litter campaign, you know, all those things started in our district because we care so much about it. But I think that it, we, I wish we just put a little bit more money and a little bit, and more energy into getting these things and supporting some of those programs here within the city. But I am thankful that we started the e-recycling program here as well. But I just want to say, I hope we use a little bit of common sense as we do things.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. And so, I mean, this is, if I'm not, if, I wanted to clarify, is for receiving a $500,000 grant? It says to receive a grant.
Right.
And, but then to provide authorization for expenditures not to exceed $500,000. So I can't actually figure out what, if we're receiving $500,000, does anyone know that? I don't know if there's someone from the administration to speak to this program. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up. I should have invited you up to begin with. I apologize. Thank you. Could you identify yourself for us in your title?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Sean Weigle. I'm superintendent with the Bureau of Environmental Services.
Right. So could you clarify this for me?
Certainly. This is a reimbursement matching grant from the organization.
So, say that again. So we spend the $500,000 and they're going to reimburse us the whole amount?
Yes.
So there's zero tax dollars net, right?
That's correct.
So why not vote yes? So do you want to speak a little bit to the problem, not just that plastic bags are bad on principle, but also I think that an additional problem with putting our recycling, whether we separate it or whether we combine it all in one bag, the bag itself is problematic for the system.
Yes.
Okay. So if you could explain that a little more clearly than I do?
Certainly. Right now, our two biggest issues we have with recycling is the bags. So number one, this grant helps us to finally begin to systematically bring bins to our residents. The second issue is certainly recycling the wrong items. So we, we collect presently bottles, cans, jugs, and jars. That is what we collect. If our residents put those in the recycling, that is what we're able to collect curbside and have recycled for them.
Was I wrong about the types of plastic?
Bottles, cans, jugs, and jars.
So bottles or glass?
We're moving away from the numbers.
Cancer thing, so, but, so, should I put my plastic yogurt container in there?
No.
All right. And I shouldn't put my plastic clamshell thing in there?
No.
But if it's a plastic bottle, I should put it in there?
Absolutely.
And if it's a glass bottle, I should put it in there? If it's a can, I should put it in there, and paper?
Yep, clean paper.
Got it. So, but then, and the cleaning and processing of the plastics to try to find a buyer for them, it's, the, the plastic bags are actually kind of problematic, and they just kind of shred and get their...
Certainly. It's a hindrance with the program.
Right. So there's virtue with that as well. So I'm happy to support today. I just thought it was important to clarify that we're really struggling with this issue. And I know Councilwoman Strasburger has worked on these issues. I've been meeting as well with all of the kind of coalition groups who are trying to help us. Reducing waste is the best thing to do. Not having the waste come into your house and then go out to the curbside is going to save your tax dollars tremendously. I think that's fair to say. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is a request, just to make sure our website is up to date, to reflect the changes of what we're supposed to be putting in the plastic bags.
I believe that was done a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Councilwoman, I just wanted to add one thing. You know, I think Councilwoman Strasburger hit the nail on the head. You have to incentivize it, and it's hard to incentivize these types of recyclables And it's hard to incentivize these types of recyclables because they're really not worth much to take them somewhere. In my business, I recycle aluminum, copper, nothing gets wasted because I get paid for it. So, you know, it's, the incentive is there to recycle. Plastics overall, you know, I have a big problem with the harder plastics because they take up more room in a landfill or a dumpster or whatever it might be. So I don't know what the answer is, but my question is this, are these plastics more of a problem because of the pollutant or are they more of a problem because of what they do with the landfills?
Really with plastics, it's not, say like a can, that you can just make more cans with it. The chemical makeup of the plastic, unfortunately with the science of recycling, typically the product gets downgraded right now. So it's certainly not a one-for-one issue. So that's why industry-wide, we've really kind of been limited on the different things that we can successfully recycle and turn into new products. So that tends to be the biggest issue with plastics.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Kayla Smith, I made a living when I was nine, 10 years old, 10 cents and 5 cents for Coke bottles and Pepsi bottles. There was not one of them laying in Beachview, I think I picked them all up at that time, so, thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Would a clerk please read the next bill?
Bill number nine, resolution vacating a portion of Rubicon Street laid out in the Elizabeth Epps Plan of Lots 3647 from Mann Street to its northern terminus in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District.
May I please have a motion?
Let it go.
Motion to approve.
With discussion? Just brief discussion, I'm going to vote okay with this, yes, for this today, but I'm gonna have some conversations with the residents to make sure they're aware of it. Wendy, you live there, I should just come over and talk to you, to make sure they're okay. And if for any reason they're not, then we'll recommit it next week and hold it, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill carries. Would a clerk please read the next bill?
Bill number 10, resolution, amending resolution number 901, accepting the dedication by the URA of parcel number 1A Technology Drive by accepting the adjustments to the right-of-way as shown in revised parcel number 1A, Council District 6.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Would a clerk please read the next bill?
Bill number 11, resolution accepting the dedication of a portion of Lidle Street, Beehive, and Eliza Street in the SP 10 Hazelwood Green, specially planned district in the 4th and 15th Ward, 5th Council District.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, bill passes. Would a clerk please read the next bill?
Bill number 12, resolution approving the recommendation of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Fallow Field Avenue from Hampshire Avenue to Broadway Avenue be reconstructed as a concrete roadway in accordance with Section 141706 of the Code of Ordinances.
Please have a motion?
Motion to approve. I'm really glad to see this project moving forward.
Second.
Oh, thank you. I'm not used to all these, you know, I went from parks to public works now and it seems like I have a lot more paperwork to deal with here, you know, so, but this particular project is in my neighborhood where I live. It's really, really was a landslide more than anything and long overdue, we had to block the road off to make it one way. I'm glad to see it's finally come to fruition.
I just want to congratulate you for doing, you're getting a lot of things done over there that haven't been done in years.
Thank you.
And so congratulations on this and some of the other things, I know they're coming.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Would a clerk please read the last bill on this committee?
Bill number 13, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements with the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County to receive grant funding to support Homewood Complete Streets Planning Project in the amount of $81,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. Given all three of these require a public hearing, can we read them all together?
Yes. Bill number 29, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Bradbury located at 1130 Redor Street in the Central North Side neighborhood, 22nd Ward. Bill number 30, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the City County Building located at 414 Grant Street in downtown 1st Ward. Bill number 31, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Pennsylvania National Bank located at 3480 Butler Street in Lawrenceville, 6th Ward.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to hold these resolutions for a Kibbeld Cast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, all three bills passes. That moves us on to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Mrs. Strausberger. Would a clerk please read the first?
Bill number 27, resolution, amending resolution number 663, which amended the agreement with EDOC Technologies for licensing services and maintenance and support services for a one-year contract extension at an additional cost not to exceed $35,765.43.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Would a clerk please read the next bill?
Bill number 28, resolution, amending resolution number 146, which authorized the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Qsend Technologies for the purchase of constituent relationship management software services necessary for the operations of the city's 311 response line by extending the term for one additional year and by increasing the authorized spending amount by $56,274.75.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second. Councilwoman Strausberger?
Would you like to come up to the table? Can you please introduce yourself for the public and the members?
Yeah, Wendy Urbannick, 311 Manager.
I'm Gwendolyn Moore, Acting Assistant Director, Technology IMP.
Thank you for being here. So I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to ask you about, you know, how this, how Qsend is going. I remember when we first adopted the technology. I understand that this is a one-year renewal with, you know, the possibility for reassessment in a year or so. But how is it going? How is the technology working? You know, is it, is it up to the standards that you would hope for constituent management?
I've been really pleased so far. They continue to do upgrades, they just did another new release that's gonna allow us to put service requests on hold. So, for example, if we have a request for painting, we can't do it in this type of weather, and we can put it in the hold status so that time doesn't count against how long it takes to actually complete the task.
Ah, so if you're looking at metrics in terms of-
Correct.
-you know, improving service time or-
Right, it's more realistic.
Gotcha. And I know that you are active nationwide in the industry that you're in, and I wonder if you believe that the software is comparable to other cities' constituent management software?
Um, I feel that it meets our needs. It's a lot less expensive than somewhat what some of the other bigger cities are using. I'm very satisfied, my office is very satisfied. I think the one concern I have is the backend, the data, which I don't deal with as much. So, being able to have our colleagues access that.
From a technology perspective, we're only extending for a year because we'd like to evaluate the, some of the aspects of the application itself. We do have some concerns with integration with some other systems, and Qsend has been working with us, but it hasn't been able to integrate as much as we would like. So that's why we only asked for one year, we want to evaluate other options. But again, it does meet all of Wendy's needs, we're just trying to verify that it will be able to integrate with the Computronics and Cardograph and what have you, and send the data back and forth so that we can have additional analytics to review the services.
Great. You know, I know that our offices and our staff rely on it, and I do personally as well, rely on being able to review it, you know, the backend of things through Qsend instead of what we had previously. So I have not heard any complaints from my office, but I wanted to have council members have the opportunity to ask questions. And to my colleagues, if you and your staff have not been trained on how to use it and all the different features, I highly recommend it because it's, it is great software and it does what we need and helps us manage our cases appropriately. So, I'll leave it at that.
I like that. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. So when I saw this bill, I didn't really think about the data backend, so I'm really glad you brought that up. One of the things that, we use it daily in our office as well, we handle a lot of constituent calls, we're always logged, we always log 311 for them if they haven't already called because I know we're supposed to. And it's really helpful to be able to pull up previous records, that kind of thing. One of the things I, that we do by hand, that maybe we don't need to, or is this, I'm gonna tell you about it so that, you know, is this the kind of feature that it can't already do? Is that I'll have in my head the last five years of calls about a landslide area in Morningside, and I'll think, I know that we had calls about that a couple of years ago in the 1600 block, and then a year later it was in the 1500 block, and I know that this person's, you know, garage almost slid off the hill from their parking pad, and then we had this landslide over on the street like three blocks away. And my staff just looks at me like I'm crazy. And I say, you know, search for the street name, search for this family's name, search on these things, and then I'm literally writing down on a piece of paper, and I've done this, and PWSA people are here in the room, that I've literally like printed out a piece of paper that's a zoom-in map, and then drawn in 20 incidents by hand numbered and said, look, you know, this is geographically clustering a series of sinkholes and landslides and things like that. And then the engineers were able to say, oh, you know, because that for me is not something that we can do digitally.
We can pull the requests up-
Or are we trying to do that? So if I said, give me, you know, like every call going back six years in this one section of Morningside, you could do that?
Yes.
And then we'd be able to weed them out that way?
Absolutely.
So I don't have to draw them by my hand, by hand? Awesome, okay.
Map or export them to Excel or-
Awesome. So, are they, yeah, exactly, I've had you do that as well, and I want to thank you for that. So there have been multiple times, I probably haven't done it in a year or two and I should, where I've just said, you know what, just export the last 12 months from District 7 and send it to me in Excel. And you were able to do that, and it was so incredibly helpful. Because then I can sit there and a lot faster on my city desktop, you know, sort by whatever I want. Landslide's here or this neighborhood there, and it's been extremely helpful for analyzing that data. So when you want kind of more integration on the backend from something like Cardograph, which PWSA is moving to and PLI is moving to, what are you thinking? And I don't want to belabor this whole topic if we need to take it offline, but can you summarize for me like kind of what integration you are looking to improve from other products?
What-
It's just a favorite topic of mine. You said, we want to evaluate other products, we want to look at the backend integration with products like Cardograph.
Correct. We're not, so for instance, right now we have Microsoft, Microsoft does have a CRM component, but we're not sure-
Terrible, I wouldn't recommend it.
That's why we're trying to-
Am I allowed to say that publicly?
We're trying to evaluate all the other options. We understand that we're satisfied with the Qsend at this point, but what we want, would like to do is get all of the requirements and understand what other features and capabilities are required, and then map that out into, I should say, put that into a request to see what other options are out there. Not to say that we would change, but just to understand what's out there because right now we don't know.
Okay, I'll stop my conversation today, but I would love to talk with you about these topics as you move forward, and thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the bill passes.
Thank you.
Our last committee is Intergovernmental Affairs chaired by Mrs. Gross. Would a clerk please read the first bill?
Bill 14, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 1717 Locust Street.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Clerk, please read the next bill?
Bill 15, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 112 and 134 Bureaux Street Land Development Project located at 112 through 134 Bureaux Street.
Motion to approve?
I just wondered if the councilman had any feedback from it? It's 15213, is that District 1?
This is District 6. This is over near Robinson Street where Burrows connects with Robinson Street.
Okay, so I apologize.
No problem. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Clerk, next bill?
Bill 16, resolution adopting plan revisions to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Middle Street Triplex, 734, 738, and 742 Middle Street.
Please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes.
Bill number 17, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the properties located at 5305 and 5307 Home Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes.
Bill number 18, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the McArdo Residential Project, 911 Pretense Way.
Please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes.
Bill number 19, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the District 15 Beta Development.
This one I'm gonna motion to hold, but I'll motion to approve with discussion to explain myself.
Second.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna hold this one. This one is actually at planning, but they're working out conditions on the approval, so it's actually not through its planning process. So, motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, bill is held for two weeks.
Bill number 20, resolution approving an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to extend its term of existence to a date that is 50 years from the date of the approval of the Amendment to Articles of Incorporation by the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in adding stormwater planning, management, and implementation to the purpose of the authority.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
I've got people here from PWSA, would anyone who wants to discuss the bill come up? I'll just say briefly to members, this doesn't change a lot of the other fundamental articles that we have with PWSA such as the lease. What is happening here is that when we, especially this past year, we borrowed 49 million dollars from the state. Actually, part of it was grant, I think, 39 total was in a loan from the state, and the state said, well, wait a minute, we want to give you a 25-year loan term, was it, that started?
They were gonna, they were actually looking at 30.
So they wanted a 30-year loan term, but the corporation of the PWSA wasn't there there for 30 years, right? So it was, when it was incorporated, it was incorporated with a set number of years. And so we had to shorten that loan term. So here in the future to do that kind of borrowing, which is an extremely good deal, it's at, it was 1%, it ended up to be less than 1% because some of it was grant.
Correct.
So it's way better terms than we're getting from, anyone can get from Wall Street, which is, you know, we still get pretty good on our bonds at like 3%. But especially when we have so much massive infrastructure to rebuild, right? When PWSA was created, it was really kind of like, you know, just staffed and funded at maintenance. But we're way beyond that. Our pipes are 100 years old and we're, we are doing massive rebuilding underground. And so we need the articles to reflect the fact that we're going to be around to pay these bills for the next 30 years. So that's my understanding of it. So I'll, I'll open the floor for members with questions.
First, I want to thank you for this weekend. We had the water break in the West End and I know people get frustrated with PWSA and the communication, but you have communicated all weekend long, through the evenings, everything. And so I just want to thank you for that up until today. So I want to thank you very much for all that work on that.
Absolutely.
And I don't say a lot of thank yous to PWSA, so that's a big one, okay? Right, Paul Legar?
Please record that in the memo.
But now, having said that, I do have the concern about the stormwater management and you explained a little bit when we spoke on the phone.
Yeah.
Because, you know, my issue with Banksville and the flooding up there that's continuing and occurring and no results, no, no response, I mean, no solution for the residents as of yet. So can you talk to me about stormwater management a little bit because it's a big issue for me and when I see that in here, it causes me to pause. I don't care if you're around for three more years if it's going to be the same old, same old. So.
Just for the record, Jake Pollock, senior manager, Public Affairs, PWSA. The change in the Articles of Incorporation on the table today relating to stormwater management are, do not substantively change one way or another our relationship to stormwater management activities. What's happening there is that at the time that PWSA was originally incorporated, the Municipal Authorities Act did not have a specific stormwater category in the list of purposes for which an authority could be formed. Stormwater activities, when they were undertaken by a municipal authority, were kind of assumed to fall under the sewer category that was listed on the sort of the menu of options. The Municipal Authorities Act was amended in 2014 and as part of that amendment, a new stormwater category was added. So PWSA has been operating per our Articles of Incorporation that predated that change, our stormwater activities falling under the sewer category. Since we need to reopen the Articles of Incorporation today to extend the life of the authority for the financial reason that Councilwoman Gross mentioned, we just thought it was prudent to do this as a cleanup item to clarify from a legal perspective that we are exercising the stormwater powers that were added in that 2014 amendment. So I do understand your concerns, Councilwoman, about the flooding situation in Banksville and in other parts of the city. You know, Somme Run Watershed is a challenging area for us for a number of reasons. And I understand those concerns. I'm sympathetic to those concerns. You know, we are working to address them, not as quickly as you would like, not as quickly as we would like either, but we're working on it. And I'd be happy to talk more now or in the future about that. But just rest assured that this change does not have a material impact on that situation. It's, it's really more just making sure that our legal documents align with the law as it's currently written.
I think we're going to need them aligned because I know they contacted an attorney. So I think it's getting pretty serious now. But, okay, that's it. I just wanted you to explain publicly because I don't want anybody thinking I'm saying, oh, go ahead, PWSA. You're doing a great job of stormwater management.
It's not changing anything. It's just clarifying based on changes to state law that we need to keep up with.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for all your hard work on there. I know she knows, I have a question I could write to because I know she's going to be on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jake, thanks for being here. You know, you're not my water supplier, just a wee little piece of the district. So my interest, of course, is in stormwater management as Councilwoman Kail Smith. And I'm very familiar with her problems. I've been up in, on Hason Drive and, you know, all that stuff. Such an incredible challenge. I don't think people understand how hard it is to try to protect homes and things from water. So many variables in that. It's the amount of rain, how it comes, how fast, did it rain for a long time? If that ground's hard, it comes hard, fast and quick. It's not absorbed. And I, be honest with you, you know, some of these issues, I feel like there probably is no answer to, you know. Thank God we go through stretches where we don't get flooded, which we're in a pretty good stretch right now, I think. I'm scared that, you know, what the spring might bring. But what is, what is your budget for stormwater management? As far as like, what, what kind of money are you going to put into stormwater management?
For the record, Edward Barca, Deputy Director of Finance and Treasurer at the Authority. As Jake alluded to, I mean, we do have an evolving stormwater plan at PWSA. I could say as the plan stands right now, we're looking to put north of $200 million, you know, dollars plus over the next five years into stormwater management. You know, as that program develops, that number will probably increase. I expect it to. But again, I think we're just in the beginning phases and really trying to get a grasp on everything that needs to be done and then moving from there. But, you know, I could tell you that, you know, we have a bigger commitment to stormwater now than we ever have and that's going to continue into the future. And just to underscore, that's a very large number and that reinforces the reason that it's critical for us to have this extension to our, our duration of the authority under the article so that we can finance that plan at the most favorable rates in order to deliver the highest value at the lowest cost to our ratepayers.
And I appreciate what you're doing on Route 51, rebuilding the banks there. It's all going to be very helpful. However, you know, when I see what in Councilwoman Kail Smith's district with the Hason project, the amount of money that went into that and effort, pretty much all for naught, I think. You know, I, I'm not sure what kind of money went into that project, but my fear is that, you know, we're throwing money into things that aren't quite working. And to be fair, as somebody who's in the business of diverting water, I know how difficult that is. I don't think people realize how difficult, they think you just put a drain in and boom, it's, it's settled. And we know better than that. It's a, it's a gargantuan problem and the more, you know, building that goes around us, the bigger it becomes. So, so I worry about throwing money into things that might not work. And I will ask you this at the table and I've asked the administration, I've asked many people, a simple thing, like when you're putting $200 million, million dollars into stormwater management, I'm looking for about 100 sandbags, which might make all the, all the difference in the world for some people. Will you commit to that for me? Will somebody buy me some sandbags, please?
I can't commit to that today.
I mean, it's amazing I can't get sandbags. It really is. I'm about ready to go out buying myself. But, but, you know, these are like, people are begging me. All I need is sandbags, put it in front of my garage. I'm willing to do it myself, you know, go there with my truck with the sandbags. But I can't get sandbags. I mean, can we include that in the stormwater management fee?
I don't know if we can include it in the fee. We've not been able to offer that thus far. The primary concern there is liability. If we provide those materials for someone to do work that we cannot supervise or ensure the adequacy of, then there's potential risk and that's been the major stumbling block. It's something that I'm happy to look into again, as I have when you've requested in the past, but that's our, our big concern and the big, big problem.
Think of it like this, Jake, PR for you. 100 sandbags, people will, you're talked up to high heavens, honest to God, you know, because it at least looks like we're trying something. We know obviously that's not the long-term fix, but it's a short-term gap to fill. And I think people would really, really appreciate something as simple as sandbags. I don't know how much they are a piece, but, you know, you can't, can't, can't barely put a dent in that $200 million, I would say. So I'm asking for sandbags. Will you, I'm going to ask the administration, I'm going to ask anybody in that stormwater, you know, management business. So.
Can I just say something to that, please? I just want to say, I, I heard you just said that, you know, the risk and we're, there's a liability involved by not doing something too. And so I mean, I'd rather see us err on the side of caution than to err on the side of doing nothing and, and then still being sued because we allowed water to flood somebody's home. I think that kind of thinking is what PWSA, what got us here in the first place with PWSA, is they need to do something for the residents. And if they want sandbags to stop water from coming in, give them a darned sandbag.
Simplest thing.
It's the simplest thing in the world. And I mean, it's, we make it so like it's rocket science. And so I just want to say, get them sandbags, okay?
Please, thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross, we're going to ask you, we're going to ask you again and again till we make sure.
I would, I would be happy to talk more about sandbags. I have a constituent asking PWSA for sandbags. So the three of us all have.
So to be honest with you, I went to a borough and got it for my residents before because they had them. And I shouldn't have to do that. I mean, they're ratepayers, they're, they, in the city, you know, residents of the city of Pittsburgh, not in the boroughs I had to go to, you know, to get bags. And it was somebody who helped us out before. So I'll just say that.
If I may, there's a balance, I think, between like some micro situations that have ad hoc solutions, but then one of the things that we, we can't do is do everything ad hoc or you end up not spending money efficiently and intelligently for what needs to come next, right? One of the things that I know Councilwoman Colko also likes to bring up is that some of the houses in his district just should never have been built and are just in the wrong place. And no amount of infrastructure that the public could spend, hundreds of millions in just one location, will ever stop those houses from being flooded. Then those houses should just not be there. And so that's a different situation, right? And so for us to look at where there are infrastructure priorities or the best places not to fix infrastructure is, I think, an important part of a public conversation. I always want to refer people to two of the kind of priority settings that I think PWSA has done very well in the last five years. First of which is the mayor's green print plan where we figured out which of the sewer sheds, because they're not all the same, not every square foot of city property is contributing equally to the runoff that the federal government is, got us under consent decree for. And we figured out which square feet were contributing the most. So 20% of the sewer sheds are contributing 80% of that EPA penalty. And so we can prioritize those and we will get way more bang for the buck out of each tax dollar. Similarly, when we did the leadwater service line replacements, we fought with the state for a year to get permission to go onto private property. We all did that conversation here and were helpful in getting the state to change the law. And then we prioritized where there were the most children, where there were low immediate, low and moderate incomes in the city, people who didn't, would not have the means to replace their own leadwater service line. We started with those households and those neighborhoods. And then, of course, where there was a density of lead lines on a street so that when we brought in a crew, we were replacing as many feet of lead line as we possibly could because they were clustered together. And it's a lot more efficient for the dollar. And we've done, how many thousand now?
About 6,000.
6,000 homes, right? They were prioritized according to that category. And so you do have to make choices. If we'd run around doing it ad hoc, we might have missed the homes with children, we might have missed the homes in the low and moderate area, areas. And we certainly would have not done as many with each dollar. So I totally, I totally am supportive of some ad hoc solutions that I, and I would be happy to talk more about that because I certainly have the situations as well in my district. So let's.
I think we've got to remember who we work for. We're trying to come up with excuses and give them what they want. That's what I think.
Get me sandbags?
I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Would a clerk please read the last bill of the day?
Bill 35, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license from Bale Puck Inc. to the applicant known as 950 Penn LLC for the premises located at 950 Penn Avenue known as No950PennLLC.
Motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. That has exhausted our agenda. Any comments from members of council?
Yes, I just want to ask Bobby Wilson if he could put the bark tone on his phone.
You miss it. You miss it, huh?
There wasn't a single barking phone in this whole session.
With that, may I please have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.